Look forward to a great meeting and the first thing we'll do is stand and say the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. You want to introduce Mr. Wolfert?
Yes. So I'll start by saying that our next presentation is brought to us by Wolfert. And Andrew, you're going to have to remind me of your last name.
Bishop.
Bishop. Andrew's here with us. We started this study, I guess, a little less than a year ago, and we were taking a look at subdivision yields and what we could expect housing developments that are going up around us all over the place, what we could anticipate getting from those developments in terms of enrollment, what our enrollment trends look like over the next 10 years. And then we did a capacity study to take a look at our buildings and see exactly how full are they, what are our capacities look like, not only by enrollment, but also by program capacity. Because, you know, we talk a lot about that because our schools have changed so much in the past, you know, 25, 30, 40 years. We just don't fill up classrooms with 25 students and move on. We've got a lot of restrictions now, limitations when it comes to special education, when it comes to EL students, and those specified programs have smaller enrollments. So that impacts a school's capacity. So tonight, Andrew is going to present to you the findings from Wolfert, which will help drive our decision making in the future. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Chairman Jones, distinguished members of the board. I am Andrew Bishop from Wolfert, and as Dr. Stanley said, I'm here to discuss the subdivision yield analysis, enrollment projections, and capacity analysis for Campbell County schools. First, we'll take a look at the... Hold on, what's that? There it goes. All right, apologies. First, we're going to take a look at the subdivision yield analysis. So the subdivision yield analysis was developed for the Campbell County Public Schools using student yields. Student yields are the ratio of students divided by housing units. For example, if there are five students living in 10 homes, the student yield would be 0.5 students or one student for every two homes. To calculate the subdivision yields for the study, we used Campbell County's 2023-24 student enrollment and the subdivision housing information from Campbell County to calculate yields by housing types specific to Campbell County schools. This map shows the existing housing within Campbell County. The colors indicate the different housing types. Green areas show single-family homes. Pink are apartments. Blue duplexes. Purple indicates manufactured homes or RV parks. Orange indicates condominiums, turquoise, single-family town sites, and red indicates townhomes. The report includes more detailed information about all of these subdivisions. These tables represent the yields by housing type in each elementary school boundary, as well as the secondary boundaries. The yields are used to predict the potential number of students the division can gain as new housing developments are constructed and occupied in the future. As you can see in the tables, some school boundaries do not contain specific housing types, so the yields in those boundaries are currently zero students per unit. The takeaway here is that single-family homes and manufactured homes tend to be your largest drivers of students. This map shows the areas of planned, proposed, and active developments within Campbell County. The color scheme in the map is the same as the previous, where green is single-family homes, et cetera. The report includes more detailed information about these developments. The table on the next slide will summarize the developments occurring within the division. At the time of the report, there were 29 known developments, some being individual phases of the same community. This table displays the information by elementary, middle, and high school boundary. The projected enrollment after applying the student yields to these developments are seen in the far right columns and are separated by grade configurations. There are 568 potential students that may come from these housing developments when they are complete. As mentioned in the detailed report, some of these students could already be attending a Campbell County Public School, and some may be brand-new to the division. As mentioned previously, the report includes more detailed information about these projects.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
When you're comparing a new apartment complex or subdivision or townhouse complex compared to an existing one, or one that's been there 10 years, 15 years, whatever, do you factor in that there may be young families coming to these new ones versus families where the kids have already grown up in the other ones? Is that a factor that gets factored in, which is probably legitimate?
It's legitimate, but we just look at all of the existing housing stock and the current student enrollment to determine how, what existing subdivisions or division types are producing. So it's just based on the current production of students, and that's what we push forward.
So you don't factor that in?
No.
So where did this information, where did you garner this from?
Of the developments?
Yeah.
We would have spoken with individuals at the county and the planning department to get information on active maps, and then from there, when we get information on the projects, we'll reach out to developers to get appropriate information on the projects.
So pretty much anything that gets a permit through Campbell County should fall onto this sheet?
Into the potential, so.
Up until last year? Oh, up until?
Okay.
Up until the time we had produced the report. So as of May of '24 would have been the last update on it. So there may have been projects approved since then that we have not included. The summary of potential students by elementary school area is based on the planned residential development as illustrated on this slide. At the time of the study, there were no planned units within the Concord Elementary Boundary, which is why no student potential is identified. Next, we'll move on to the enrollment projections. A range of projections, low, moderate, high, and recommended, were developed for the Campbell County Public Schools using the cohort survival method. This presentation will focus on the recommended, but the full range can be found in the report. Direct inputs for this include 10 years of historic enrollment by school, by grade, by year, and historical resident live birth counts. Additionally, we reviewed historical building permits and census data. The cohort survival method is a widely accepted methodology used to project K-12 enrollment. This methodology uses historical live birth data and historic student enrollment to age a known population through the school grades. The percentage of students who move from grade to grade, year to year, otherwise known as survival ratios, are analyzed to determine a projection ratio that is applied to the current and future enrollment to develop the enrollment projections. The cohort survival methodology inherently considers the net effects of historic trends and migration, housing, dropouts, transfers to and from charter schools, open enrollment, and other factors. The methodology does not assume changes in policies, program offerings, or future changes in housing or migration patterns. Resident live birth counts are based on where the mother resides and are used to project kindergarten enrollment five years later. We've reviewed these counts by the ZIP code served by the division. At the time of the preparation, actual resident live birth counts were available through 2022 and used to project kindergarten enrollment through 2027-28. To project kindergarten enrollment through 2033-34, a weighted average of the last five years of live birth counts was used. This table illustrates the 10-year changes in enrollment as students have moved through the system and the division-wide level, otherwise known as survival ratios. Percentages greater than 100% indicate that there were more students than there were in the previous grade the previous year. Percentages less than 100 indicate that there was a decline of students, or students that left the system. The birth decay ratio indicates the number of children born in the area who attend kindergarten five years later. The row outlined in red shows the impact the COVID-19 pandemic had on Campbell County Public Schools. As you can see, the survival ratios in many of the grade levels, particularly at the elementary, are lower than those seen in the years prior to the pandemic. For example, kindergarten enrollment in the 2019-20 to first grade enrollment in 2020-21 dropped to 95%. This ratio from K to first grade historically was greater than 100%, meaning you received more first graders after kindergarten the next year. The last couple of years, the K to 1 ratio has stabilized and is averaging about 104%. So returning back to normal stats you've seen. In developing the enrollment projections, while we reviewed and analyzed 10 years of enrollment data, we looked at trends pre and post pandemic at the division-wide and school level. The trends seen in the more recent years were weighted more heavily than the years of the pandemic or pre-pandemic. The historical K-12 enrollment in the Campbell County Public Schools has decreased by 235 students since the 2014-15 school year. Total enrollment in the 2023-24 school year was 7,688 students. The top table shows the 10-year historic enrollment by grade, while the bottom table summarizes the annual historic enrollment by grade configuration. Historical enrollment by school by year is indicated on this slide. The line graphs at the end of each row depict the trend of growth or decline in each school from the 2014-15 school year to the 2023-24 school year.
Can I ask a question on the previous? What is the cause of the decline in enrollment year after year? Did y'all derive any causes, or is that coming later?
Yeah, we'll get to it back in time. It's mostly declines in births. So as we have smaller populations being born and coming into the system and larger groups aging out, it's just a natural decline. The number of students who are homeschooled in the division has increased since the 2017-18 school year. In the 2023-24 school year, there were 689 homeschooled students in the division. Likewise, the number of religious exempt students has also increased over the last three years. There were 173 religious exempt students in the 23-24 school year. This table shows the last 10 years of historic enrollment, as well as the 10-year recommended projection enrollment by grade, division-wide. The recommended projection developed for Campbell County Public Schools are based on the most recent trends in enrollment and resulting survival ratios representing the most likely direction of the division. Over the next 10 years, enrollment is projected to decrease by 142 students, from 7,688 students in the 2023-24 school year to 7,546 students in the 2033-34 school year. In the table, you can see the larger cohorts, otherwise dark red cells, and the smaller cohorts in the dark blue cells move through the system into the projected years. Resident live birth counts and smaller cohorts are driving the enrollment decrease. Based on this information in the subdivision yield analysis, the current residential development may potentially yield approximately 568 students. It should be noted that the number may include existing Campbell County Public Schools, as well as students who may move in from outside the division.
And it's true that that number, that 568 kids, is factored into the enrollment projections.
It is.
So even though those numbers are in there, it's offset by declining birth rates.
The projected enrollment, ah, excuse me, the projected recommended enrollment by school year is indicated on this slide. The full projection by school and grade can be found in the report. Many factors can influence student enrollment. Enrollment projections should be reviewed annually and updated as appropriate. As enrollment trends shift and actual live birth counts become available, enrollment projections should be updated. The COVID-19 pandemic introduced an unforeseen level of volatility nationwide, as seen in the survival ratios between the 2019-20 and 2021-22 school years. These ratios will need to be monitored closely over the next few years as new trends continue to be established. Lastly, we're going to take a look at the capacity and utilization analysis. This slide outlines the process for the capacity study. We started by collecting the floor plans for each CCS facility. We then created a map of each school and identified what each room was both designed and used for. That was followed by discussions with each principal to review the building layout, confirm how each room was being used, and go over any special programming or other considerations before calculating the capacity value for each building. This slide details both the elementary and secondary capacity calculations. At the elementary level, capacity is calculated by multiplying all standard classrooms by the average class size of 23.7 students per classroom, and all special education classrooms by 10 students per classroom. At the elementary level, electives or specials do not count towards the overall capacity because homerooms do not get filled with a new set of students when the class leaves to attend their specials. At the middle school and high school levels, we do the same calculation, this time including the elective classes. We then multiply this value by a scheduling factor of 75%. The scheduling factor is indicated, or included, because each teacher gets one planning period per day, meaning that each room is ideally utilized three of four periods per day, or 75% of the school day. These hallways illustrate the difference between a design and program capacity. The design capacity is based on how the building was designed, and the program capacity is based on how the building is being utilized. In our image on the left, you can see a hallway of six classrooms, each designed as a standard classroom. Each classroom gets a capacity of 23.7 students per classroom, giving this hallway an overall design capacity of 142 students. The hallway on the right illustrates the program capacity. As you can see, we have one of the classrooms being used as a resource or intervention space, and another being used for special education. Because resource rooms are typically spaces where interventionists pull students out of their classrooms in small groups, this space does not get a capacity. The special education space receives a capacity of 10 rather than 23.7. So as you can see, that the programs within the hallway are impacting the overall capacity with a program capacity of 105 students. This table shows the rooms within each elementary school by school type, or by room type, I apologize, and the overall program capacity of each school. The resulting utilization percentages or enrollment divided by capacity is shown on the right. The boundary map outlined in red below illustrates the school utilizations by boundary. As you can see, the elementary schools are currently well utilized, but please keep in mind, this assumes only the current enrollment and not the projected enrollment of any future housing. We also identified some rooms within schools that could be converted back to general classrooms should the need arise to do so. The resulting program capacities are shown in the column furthest to the right. This table shows our middle school and combined schoolrooms by type and the resulting capacities and utilizations. Remember, a utilization factor of 75% was applied to the capacities to account for teacher planning periods. The map in the center is showing the middle school and combined school utilizations by boundary. Overall, middle schools are slightly underutilized with room for growth, and the combined schools are both underutilized.
Say that again? You said, "The middle schools are underutilized"?
Underutilized, based on the capacity calculations and the enrollment. This table shows our high school and combined schoolrooms by type and the resulting capacities and utilizations. Just as with the middle schools, a utilization factor of 75% was applied to the capacities to account for teacher planning periods. The map on the right is showing the high school and combined school utilizations by boundary type. While Rustburg High School is slightly underutilized, Brookville High School is highly utilized, even when we consider the renovations occurring at that building. This table ties the capacity study to the enrollment projections, providing a projected utilization based on the recommended future enrollment of the schools. As you can see, each school varies in their enrollment growth or decline. More detailed information is included in the finalized report. And with that, that concludes the presentation, so I'm here for questions.
What I'm gathering, we're more or less underutilized now, and you're projecting capacity to slightly fall off going forward?
Just slightly.
So like, overall summary?
Overall summary, you're probably, you're probably gonna, we're looking at a similar situation to what you're already in. So Tomahawk probably being your most utilized elementary, since, you know, closest to Lynchburg and others, elementary is just slightly underutilized as we see, you know, project a small decline in enrollment over the next 10 years. So some shifting enrollment, but nothing where a one school facility would be overburdened.
So when you look at this, I think one of our most pressing needs is Brookneal. If you look at the utilization chart for elementary school, you see Brookneal is the most utilized, which I know surprises everybody because the combined school is probably the least utilized. So that brings us to, you know, a conversation about how do we alleviate some of that pressure? And that's something that we're just going to have to look at throughout the school year. For the past few years, the school's been doing a good job, and we don't feel like any changes were needed, but at the same time, based on this, the enrollment there will continue to grow a little bit, so at some point, it may become detrimental to have that many kids or to be approaching overutilized, and we might have to make some decisions there. Same with Tomahawk and Leeswell Road, they're the next two schools in terms of highest utilization, so down the road, we might have to look at doing some things to alleviate some pressure there.
So what is a target? I mean, you know, 100% capacity is 100, or 100% utilization is 100%. Here, you should be able to have 100%, but what's a target, what's a recommended target?
For most of my clients, we recommend 85 to 90% utilization. So you're making sure you're getting the most out of the school without over-impacting the staff and over-impacting the students.
So anything over 90 is sort of busting at its seams a little bit?
Especially when you have some schools in the 70%, you know, low 70s, you know, so you have some distribution issues as far as, you know, capacity to enrollment.
And one of the things that you look at, Brookville High School, is how are they utilized? But one thing that's not reflected in the study is the fact that we've got approximately 150 students who come and go during the school day, so they're not there all day. We've got, you know, 20, 20, some kids that are early college. We've got over 100 kids going to CBCC, so that alleviates some of that capacity problem at Brookville High School.
I'm still scratching my head a little bit about these new subdivisions. Have you done these? I'm sure you're an expert, but doing these studies in other locations with growing development and stuff, what is the trend with new families in new developments with young kids?
In some of my, in a lot of my clients I work with, not, you know, some are out of the state of Virginia, what I've seen is with the newest homes, they are not generating the school-aged children that they used to, because the price point of those homes is just exceedingly high for families with school-aged children. So what you see is in some of those divisions, they're starting to drive more middle school enrollment or high school enrollment with established families who are able to fit into that price point.
Do y'all take into consideration families that just might move? I mean, might be in Campbell County schools, but move from one end of Rustburg to the other, is that figured anywhere?
So in our historic enrollment, if there's, if there have been families who have moved from one end of the county to the other, who are, were in the system and may have left a private school, that all gets factored in when we factor in the historic enrollment. So all those trends are factored in as we, we project forward.
So you all have been provided with detailed copies of each one of these reports as you're going through them. If you have any questions, certainly feel free to call me. And just remember that this study doesn't, is a snapshot or is a projection based on the data that they had at the time. So that doesn't include future developments of Campbell County. It can't factor in migration. It can't factor in some things that, you know, if all of a sudden we had half of our homeschool students decide they wanted to come back. Okay, that's not something that is projected, okay? So things that we have to take into consideration. But these are all projections for us to make decisions on, but it's not perfect.
And that's every projection?
Not a crystal ball, right?
No.
I think that's a good point about the homeschool, because we've doubled it in 10 years. But homeschool is easily accessible because of technology, and it's also increased in popularity. But that doesn't mean that they're not going to return because we're offering something else. So, I mean, that would be a huge chunk. You're talking about 600 and some students. Even half of them can make an impact on our high schools if they're wanting to do the sports and, you know, be involved.
But the other takeaway from this, with just a couple of exceptions, we have plenty of room to absorb more students.
There is, yeah. There is room to absorb, and at the elementary school, there are some classrooms that can be reclassified to house additional students, so.
So unless something changes dramatically in the next 10 years with growth in Campbell County?
An increase in birth rates, just trending down to...
Yeah, and that's a nationwide issue with the birth rates.
I think the biggest decisions that we would have to confront down the road would be how to alleviate some of the issues at Brookneal, and we would have room at William Campbell to possibly do that. And then when it comes to Leeswell Road and Tomahawk, we may have to consider some attendance boundary changes to alleviate some pressure there and put students in schools that have plenty of room.
And it wouldn't be a huge number of, it wouldn't be a huge number of kids to...
I wouldn't foresee that.
Selective. Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks so much. Thank you all for your time. My goodness.
Y'all study these percentages and numbers, there'll be a test on them next month.
That's what I was gonna say, or you're gonna have to have a quiz.
So Clay, have y'all had time to really, you and your staff, had time to fully digest this to make sense what you're looking at?
I have. My staff and I will go over it Monday, and I'll share it with principals next week so they can take a look at it. I've spent most time with it, yeah.
All right. We're gonna share this with the board, seat belts?
I will, yes, sir.
These are basically all conclusions of the more in-depth reports that we have. So this, this is the takeaway.
Correct, sir.
Even if you don't have an engineering mind, David, this is the takeaway.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Glad you get to push all those numbers around. Golly day. Anybody got any more questions or comments? No speakers. Uh, next order of business is approval of the August twelfth meeting minutes. You said there were no speakers, right? We, we jumped at them, all right.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Vaughn, second by Mr. Phillips, that we approve the minutes of the August twelfth meeting. Anybody have any questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Now, we're gonna approve the April ninth meeting minutes of the joint committee meeting. We entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ms. Tanner, second by Ms. Vaughn, that we approve the April ninth joint committee meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions?
Should we be voting on a meeting we did not attend?
Yeah, yeah. We've never done this before.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have, yeah, we have.
Has the board already approved the meetings, or the supervisors?
They're gonna do those.
We, we've approved them before.
We've done it when it's been a full joint or when it's been.
No, just, we've had just, just joint.
I don't think we can approve a meeting we didn't go to.
We weren't there. We don't know if the boards approved them.
So you and Karen can approve that?
Yep.
You made a motion?
I made a motion.
We're putting it on both y'all.
I'm not going to jail for y'all.
Well, everybody in favor say aye.
Obstain.
She and I voted aye, aye, you know, abstain. All right, now let's get back in some rhythm here. Payment of the bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed those bills and moved to approve payment.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Miller that we pay the bills, second by Ms. Parker. Anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, accepted donations, Michelle.
Tonight you have eight donations that were listed in advance of the meeting unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maddox, second by Ms. Vaughn, that we approve the donations. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just with a lot of gratitude.
Yes, I think to those who donated some donations.
Nice ones.
Wonderful.
Nice ones. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, supplemental appropriations, Michelle.
Tonight you have one appropriation listed unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve it.
I got a question. Does that new insurance replace buses, like this one did?
No, we do not have full replacement calls.
All right, thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Miller, second by Mr. Maddox, that we approve the request for supplemental trends, supplemental appropriations. Anybody have any more questions? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-resident tuition, Michelle.
Tonight you have a list of students who have been approved, endorsed by the school for approval. Unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve them.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Ms. Tanner, that we approve the non-resident tuition lists. Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Personnel report, Ms. Huntley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you all have the personnel report in front of you. As you can see, it's a little more heavy with classified staff this time. We're still hiring a few instruct, those types of instructional positions in schools. We have about a dozen open still, but principals have been hiring those. Dr. Renella also let me know the number is a little higher for transportation. He still needs, or we still need, ten full-time, part-time positions. But included in that is, he's including two transportation staff members are out on medical leave, so he needs replacements for them. And then also three new routes that he's added for the beginning of the school year. So it's a little higher than last time since we have those new needs. So unless you have any other questions, I'd ask that you approve the personnel report as written.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maddox, second by Mr. Phillips, that we approve the personnel report. Anybody have any questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Wilson, religious, religious exemptions.
Evening Chairman Jones and board members. Tonight we have two requests for religious exemption. If you're consideration, there are no questions, I would propose that we approve them as presented.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Ms. Vaughn, second by Ms. Tanner, that we approve the two religious exemptions. Anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Hale. Golly day, can you break, can you break these things up a little bit more than?
Yes, thank you all. So first, you have one policy, policy J E D R, that is up for first reading. This has to do with changes that actually have taken place over the past few years. This policy was last updated in 2013 and it's being updated to include the practices that we are all already doing. We do allow students to complete work when they are suspended. In addition, we do not hold those absences against them since they are under suspension for disciplinary matters. So we want to make sure that we are consistent with our practices as well as with the Virginia code. It does not require any action tonight, but I welcome any questions that you might have.
All right, get into the second reading.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate you all and your diligence at looking at this long list, thank you. So the, you have several policies for a second reading. I did want to highlight one to make sure that is clear. This is policy E B C B. This has to do with fire drills. And so the old policy, we have been following what has been by code, okay? Required less fire drills than what we had done practice-wise. All of our schools did more than that. And then this year, they actually revised the bill, it was House Bill sixty-six, that said we need to follow the fire prevention code. It reads that you have to have a fire drill within, one within the first ten days and then you also have to have one per month after that. Our practice is actually more. We believe that practicing fire drills effectively requires us to do them. And so our practice has been, we do one within the first week of school. We do one per week for the first month of school. And then we also do a fire drill every month. So this just reflects the change that happened with the code. We still do more than that, but we did want it to mirror the state language since that was updated. And before asking for any type of action item, I welcome any other questions that you might have.
Any questions on the, on the policy?
Are these changes driven by internal administrative review or by Virginia School Board Association or a combination of both?
Combination of both. There were several updates in February to July one so that they prepare for that. But also, we reviewed them as a senior staff to make sure that we were all on the same page as well as we're able to receive feedback from our principals. That's important for us as we move forward. And so this does not include every potential change there is. These are what is most, most important, recommended from the V S B A as well as from our senior staff. And hopefully I won't bring so many to you in the future, but I appreciate it.
Dr. Hale was very generous with her time because I had a multitude of questions and I didn't want to drag this meeting over. But she was very generous and explained everything well.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. All right, this is an action item, so if you do not have any other questions, I would ask for approval.
I move to approve the changes.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Miller, second by Ms. Parker, that we approve the policy revisions presented by Dr. Hale. Anybody have any more questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Now you, gifted plan.
Yes, so the next piece that we're gonna be sharing about tonight is regarding our gifted plan. And I'm gonna ask some, some of my colleagues to join me. So I'll be joined by Laney Patrick, who is our instructional specialist, as well as Dr. Maggie Wilkerson, our director of secondary education, and also Ms. Ashley Walsh, who is our director of elementary. Our gifted plan, we do have to review this every four years. So this is a standard procedure for us, but we thought it would be helpful to provide some additional information as well as some of our future goals. So to start with, just to give you a little bit about what we're going to talk about tonight, we're not going to go through every single detailed page of the plan. You do have that copy, but do you want to give you an overall philosophy and definition of giftedness that we use? Also, our goals and objectives for all of our students within this program. Then moving into how our students identified, what does that look like as well as service procedures? And then really this differentiated curriculum and instruction that we feel is so important for us. And then also our needs for professional development for our teachers and then future us down the road. So to start with, our philosophy is really rooted in our mission. We truly believe that a world-class education enables every student, including our gifted learners, to pursue any post-K-12 endeavor that they wish to and are prepared, we want to make sure they're prepared to do. And really, we see the foundation of this in the classroom with the work that's done by our teachers. But we also know that we need to continue to enrich the learning experience of our gifted learners. The way that we defined giftedness, so again, it's gifted and talented, you're gonna see that language used. It's measurable criteria. This has to do with superior academic performance. And we still use the term, the Odyssey Gifted Program is the term that we use for this. It addresses the needs of these students. And then it lists some of the ways that we identify them, whether that's in elementary, that would extend K-12. We also do have students who might transfer to us that we work with for their identification. And then some students who might be found gifted at a later point in their educational career. And you notice that we continue to provide that differentiated instruction within the classroom, which we'll talk a little bit more about. So we're gonna take a look at some of our goals and objectives, starting with the identification. So when we rewrite or revise our gifted plan, we try to come up with different goals and action steps that we can kind of have govern the rest of the plan. So with identification, basically, our main goal is to evaluate and look at the different instruments and things that we use to identify students as gifted. We identify in two areas, general intellectual ability, which is just general giftedness, and then specific academic aptitude, which looks at more of like your specialization in math and English, science and history. With our action steps for this plan, we continually review and look at our pre-screening measures, what we do to kind of identify a talent pool and then our, those different screening tools, testing instruments and things that we use to identify those students. In addition to that, we are regularly analyzing data from all sorts of assessments, which we'll talk a little bit more about at the end of this presentation. And we're trying to make sure that we are identifying students from diverse populations. To deliver services to students, we're looking at what we're actually doing to actually help grow these students. So looking at making sure that our students have access to differentiated curriculum, they have opportunities to grow intellectually as well as socially emotionally. What we are currently doing with our delivery of services is making sure that our classroom teachers are implementing differentiated instruction and providing different scaffolds and things to tailor the academic need of the gifted students. In elementary, we do have a gifted resource teacher who services all of seven of our elementary schools and focusing on different enrichment types of activities like STEM enrichment, research and that sort of thing. We also have literacy and math coaches that meet with teachers regularly and they're looking at ways to be able to provide support to all types of learners, including our gifted students, through differentiation. And then in the secondary schools, most of the services lie in the courses that they take. So they have access to advanced coursework to be able to stretch the students and, you know, advanced programs like governor school and that sort of thing once they get to secondary level. So for curriculum instruction, we are looking at our gifted students. We really want to propel them in enhancing critical thinking, creativity, problem-solving skills across all content areas. The couple of things we want to do is first, we want to look at learning experiences, both technology-wise and in the classroom. What are we having those students do? Second, we want to look at our coursework. What are our classes, what are coursework specifically in middle and high? And then lastly, we're gonna always be evaluating our curriculum offering. Later in the presentation, I'll talk about some things we're doing specifically in elementary level, both with the new standards and the new curriculum we have in place. Knowing that our curriculum and instruction needs to meet the needs of our students in the school day, all during the school day, but also at times pull out, but really, things are tilting towards not pulling out as many, many students at times. So we're reflecting on that curriculum instruction. And then professional development. We want to focus on, again, first educating ourselves and our staff members, what does it mean to be gifted? And how do we, what are the strategies that work for our gifted students? What are things that at times are hard for our gifted students? Sometimes it's hard for them to hear a different opinion. How do we look at that? How do we train our staff members to do that? And then we want to look at the people we have in our, our system and say, what kind of professional opportunities do we give them? Laney was just actually at a meeting last week, learning from others in the state, what kind of strategies? So we want to gather more information. And then we want to look at what is the different information out there? For example, different colleges provide opportunities for students. We want to make sure we're aware of that and we're educating our staff members on that so we can educate our parents. And then we want to make sure we're constantly saying, we have a good partnership with University of Lynchburg. They have a gifted endorsement. We're constantly saying, hey, this is out there and encouraging our staff members, if they so choose, to pursue that to better help us support our gifted students.
And continuing, we want to ensure that there's equal representation of students. The goal is that all student groups have opportunities to be identified and served in the gifted program. The objective is to use multiple sources of data, both qualitative and quantitative, to identify these learners to participate in the program. The action steps are obviously to regularly analyze the data from different subgroups. Those data sources include MAP, SOL and others to identify trends. We also have to review the assessment tools to ensure that there's no bias, to ensure that, that the assessments are fair. And then lastly, we want to explore and adopt alternative, alternative assessments to measure our needs. Okay, and then a last goal is parent and community involvement. And obviously, the goal here is to continue to engage our parents and community stakeholders to understand and commit to our program. The objective is to increase awareness of those groups. And the action steps will be to maintain an updated webpage, send periodic newsletter, newsletters and then use additional outlets such as email and digital communication. Okay, so for the next part, we're gonna take a little bit of a deeper dive into how we screen our students for giftedness. So screening is an annual search for gifted students. It takes, it doesn't, it goes along with nomination, but it happens before. So when students take their MAP test and other instruments, you can see on that chart and it's also referenced in your page nine of the gifted plan, we actually look at multiple data points to be able to determine who might be a gifted student. So from the selection, we're able to take and then use these students to be referred to for full evaluation of our program. So the referral and identification process, basically, anyone can nominate any student for gifted services. Schools actively use the information that they get from the screening tools that was, we looked at previously and other evidence to support.
and other evidence to support the nomination of students. Once a referral has been made on that student, a nomination form is submitted and signed by the parent, and then we begin formal, the formal process. For GIA and SAA, students are evaluated using multiple criteria, so it's not just what they get on one specific test. It's looking at different things, such as a parent evaluation, a teacher evaluation, what they score on the NAGLIER, which is the assessment that we use, and then also looking at a creative writing sample. In this current plan that we have, and we've given you guys the draft for, we have made one change and to eliminate one of the criteria for the interview. We, in our previous plan, we had an interview process, and that one little thing takes about an hour per student to do, and with only one gifted resource teacher, is quite taxing. We only needed three out of the recommended measures, and we were, we had checkboxes on all of them. So we wanted to kind of remove that, just because of the time that it takes. But once all the data is collected, the eligibility meeting is held at each school. There's a gifted lead in each of our school buildings, and they meet. Classroom teachers are invited, the gifted representative, sometimes counselors, and other people are invited to attend this meeting to kind of comb through some of the information and to determine whether or not the student would be eligible for gifted services. Once that has been reviewed and the committee makes their decision, parents are notified by letter, and then we have our option, our service options. So we are governed by several things. One, our service options need to be continuous and sequential, which means we can't just do gifted in K-3. It has to go the whole K through 12 spectrum. We, during that service option, kids need time with their age peers, as well as their intellectual peers. Students need to be able to have time to be able to work independently, to have access to research, and then being able to have options where they can foster their intellectual growth. With each of those examples, I tried to highlight some of the specifics, but we won't go into too much detail. There is a nice chart on Page 21 through 24. I think it's on Page 24 that outlines those things by grade level.
So our details of our differentiated curriculum instruction. As you know, we have new standards this year, and we have new curriculum this year, both in reading and math at the elementary school, and of course, K through 12, new standards. The standards are extremely rigorous, extremely rigorous. We are fortunate that we have new programs in both Bookworms program in reading and our math curriculum that is matching those rigorous standards. I will say, our teachers are doing an outstanding job of learning the curriculum and learning the standards. It is a lot. With that being said, this really tilts in. For example, in math, a lot of focus is being placed on student dialogue. That means, for some of our gifted students, that's really hard. They can tell you the answer, they can't tell you how they did it, because they just know, right? Well, our standards are really pushing some of those things that we want to look at. So both for our curriculum and instruction, we really want to look at those problem solving, those, what are opinionated. That's really built into our curriculum. We're going to continue to foster that, that's being built into our curriculum. We do have a time of the day during our literacy block connected with Bookworms, which is the DI block. That has not started yet this school year. We're doing training on it into the month, but the DI block will then meet the needs of all of our students. Our gifted students will do things like possible literacy circles, certain book clubs, and things of that nature that extend them. In our math, we have guided math, and so that guided math block looks at students and where they are. Reading says, you may know this, not know this skill, but you can learn this skill. Math really says it's a progression, right? So you've got to know certain skills in order to do some things. So in math, we do have guided math, and our students are being extended on. I will say with the new standards, the standards are being interwoven. So in the past, it's like, we're going to teach you this one skill, right? Now the state's saying, we need to interweave all these skills together. So we're really looking at, how do we do this well? In addition to the fact that these students do need to be pulled out, they need to be stretched and coached sometimes, even in the way they're looking at that. So we are going to be still having our students pulled out at certain times. It is an interesting battle of when you pull them out. When are we looking at the DI block? Or certain times during math, if we could pull these gifted students out, and providing them extra time to really extend, to really stretch them, stretch their thinking where the classroom teacher may not be able to go that far. Typically, we do science fair projects with them and things of that nature, and we really push them to extend themselves. So looking at that, we look at that at the elementary school, and then as we go up, as we spoke about in middle and high, we really look at courses and course, and how we look at students and meeting their needs.
Okay, personal and professional development. So we know that professional development can play a vital role in supporting our gifted program by ensuring that our educators are well-equipped, well-equipped to identify, nurture, and support gifted learners. This training will help teachers recognize giftedness, ensuring that the identification process is inclusive and equitable. The PD provides teachers with strategies to differentiate the instruction to meet students' needs. It will help recognize and promote well-being, as well as academic achievement. And lastly, training provides opportunities for collaborative planning and support to keep current with research and trends in education. This basic graphic identifies four types of professional development. Characteristics of gifted learners, attending state conferences, providing resources and strategies to support the gifted learners, as well as the instructional coaches, and then encouraging and supporting teachers to obtain their gifted endorsement.
So today, you do have before you a draft, but we do know that in the future, we would like to explore more an early talent model. We know that in K through 2, we do have those opportunities for differentiated instruction, but we also know that grades 3 through 5 need more. And what is some better ways that we could support those students, as well as those teachers? Because elementary teachers' plates are very full right now. Additionally, as we said, we want to support teachers in getting their gifted endorsement. I personally have my gifted endorsement, and that coursework was very rewarding for me as a teacher. We also want to look at other tools for identification. There are new screeners that are available that would give us more information about our students, but also not be as cumbersome and not quite as outdated as some of the ones that we are using. We also plan to offer PD for our teachers at the Teacher Learning Academy, and also want to really explore the summer for how we could also continue to support some of our students who are gifted learners who want that opportunity over the summer. As we have future revisions to the gifted plan, we will bring it back to you. But right now, we do have some limitations with personnel that we do have to recognize, as well as our resources. And we wanted to give you a good, a good model for now of where we are, knowing that we do hope to make some changes in the future. And at this point, we will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
How short are you on staff, as far as being able to fully staff programs you would like to have?
Well, we currently are, did have one teacher. Now we have hired a part-time person, that person moved to a different position within the county. So you have one person supporting seven schools. And right now, we've been able to hire one part-time person who hasn't been able to start yet. So we are limited right now, just given the situation of where we are.
So what do you need, I mean, I didn't answer the question.
Right now, we still need at least a part-time position for this year to help support with paperwork and with testing, which we are working on. So we are working on that to get that set for this school year. So we need that now. So if you know of anybody, encourage them to apply, please, for that. And that's what we need currently. For the future, if we are to look at different things, we may have more needs.
I think we need to recognize that this program's been stretched for some time. So, you know, previously, it was one teacher. It used to be seven teachers for seven schools. Cut to five, cut to, it just kept getting cut as teachers retired and moved on, and they weren't refilled. So we were struggling with the one that we had was doing an amazing job, but she was stretched to no end. So I think we really need to recognize that now we're working on well below what we really needed to make it successful, and really serve the kids that are identified as gifted, and to serve the teachers that are trying their best to do the DI in the classrooms. But it's a hard time of year right now to try to look for someone who could fill that spot.
And I will say, kudos to Ms. Patrick. She fills in a lot, you know, as needed throughout the year, in addition to her responsibilities for K through 12 science. So we are stretched thin at the moment, but we definitely need at least a part-time right now.
How many students are in this program?
There's about 167 that would be on the elementary teachers' caseload. If you totaled up the K through 12, probably about 400 students.
With one teacher.
Only there, that teacher would support K through 5. So once you move to middle school, that's the coursework that they have the opportunity to do, and that they are able to, but if we, obviously, if you have more staff, then you also have more opportunities at the middle school level, too.
So when you're, when you're identifying these kids and the nomination and all that, is there a limit? So one class may have four kids, one class may have two, and so anybody who meets the criteria is able to be in the cohort of quote gifted?
Correct.
Good, okay, that's one question. Second question, if we do elementary, middle school, high school, and if you were to grade our gifted program, our success, achieving what we'd like to achieve, let's be honest, what do we, where are we?
Well, at the moment, we're short-staffed, right? So, and then it's been stretched very thin. And so I would say that we're doing our best, but we're in a, probably like a B-minus stage.
At elementary? What about middle school?
Middle school, middle school and high school, like I said, it's coursework. So we're really working on, and Dr. Wilkerson has joined us in this, to really make sure that we're providing lots of opportunities across the division. That is something we see as important. We have quite a bit of opportunities for AP, for advanced coursework, once they get there. But we really see an important time for students is that sixth-grade year. That sixth to seventh-grade year is an important one of transition, that we know we could do more. We also have some enrichment opportunities with courses at some of our schools, in addition to STEM. And so we see these are places where we can continue to grow. But the other piece at secondary is that we are able also to look at course recommendations to then determine what do students want to take, what could somebody possibly teach differently next year? So it's a little bit different. It's somewhat easier in some ways to staff, because you might have someone who really wants to do that, but it depends on your overall numbers. So we are actually, I'm meeting tomorrow about the course planning process to start getting, working on this, because the more good information we have at the secondary level going into January, we know what we need. The thing that is hard, late resignations. That is very difficult for us, as you kind of see here. When we have a late resignation or one over the summer that we know is going to be hard to fill, it does take longer for us to get that. And sometimes you want a quality candidate for these positions. So you might be able to make something work for a year, knowing we really are searching for that candidate January, February.
But I would say between AP offerings, Gov. School,
We have a robust offering at our high schools.
That's especially, that the secondary levels.
Yeah.
I think that's well served.
Yeah, well, they, we have students doing, between the CTE Academy, between going to Gov. School, STEM, we're looking at other opportunities with teachers for tomorrow. There's a lot of offerings at the high school level. We see the need, obviously, elementary, you know, there is that need. And then thinking more about that sixth to seventh-grade transition.
So is the Dr. Stanley, is that a target for ours to include in the budget the following year? An additional part-time teacher or full-time teacher, or I'm assuming?
I think as we go through this school year, identify what those needs and what that model could look like. And I think that'll drive the number of people we feel like we need to hire. So yes, to answer your question. Yeah, I think a big piece about differentiated instruction is divvied in, belief that all gets gifted in some way. And it's a matter of figuring out what that looks like for each kid and differentiate instruction to meet their needs. And you're hearing tonight that we've got new curriculum and resources in math and English, or literacy at the elementary level that are very rigorous right now. So I think everybody's been stretched at that level at this point. But we just need to shape up what their programs will look like, and then how it could better suit our students' needs, and then find the people to do it.
Well, can we, can we, at this point right here, go ahead and seek out part-time personnel? And just commit to?
Yeah, we had someone tentatively that was going to take it, and then it just, it didn't work out. So we're still working on it. We've been working on it.
About full-time position there. Because you're saying you went from seven to one, is that correct?
When I arrived here, I think we had about either five or six, and budget-wise, at one year, we scaled back to Carrie Wilmer, to one. And so she traveled to all seven schools. So that was a budget decision many years ago. The late then transition of her to another position, she was outstanding. We found, Holly Hawkins is going to be doing our, some part-time work, who's an outstanding educator. We had someone lined up that we thought was going to take this, and then as of today, reconsidered. So we thought we had it all planned out, and that this year, we'd be able to do some things. And now we're going to go to Plan B and find someone else that can help with the testing. There is a lot of, not only are we wanting to educate them and teach them, right? But there's a lot of paperwork on the back end. Not only we're looking at this paperwork, but Piedmont Regional Gifted School for the summertime, there's a lot of paperwork that is to keep with this position. So we're looking at that and analyzing that. But we're going to try to take two part-time people and make it work this year, because the applicants we had were not where we wanted to be at this moment. And then we, like Dr. Hale said, come January, we're going to be in the hunt. And then if we need extras as the board and we make decisions, we'll start looking for those. I've talked to principals, but really, it became down to the point where if a teacher stepped forward and said, I want this position, we'd be taking a teacher in the midnight hour of this school year from a building and putting them in this position. That wasn't fair to a building or, in general, our students. So we found an outstanding candidate, who, Holly Hawkins, I twisted her arm, and she agreed to come back part-time. So we see this is a need, and we know the need. It's just timing was hard this year. And then addition, as our history lays out, we've cut throughout the years.
Well, there's always budget constraints, and we're well aware of that. But having said that, we have put a lot of effort and resources, and the state has put a lot of resources into catching these kids up, and that needed to be done. But we now need to look forward, we're catching those kids up, hopefully. And so now we need to look at the other end of the spectrum and make it a little bit more of a priority. You're waffling on what you really need, but what you really need is what you need to tell the board so the board can make some direction of what you need and make a recommendation and make it, I feel, a priority.
And I, I will say this, part of, I think, maybe my hesitancy to say, hey, I want this, is I really want to see how these standards fall in line. We know we're going to need support. We're not saying that. How much support do we need? I think that's what we're grappling with is.
You need more than that now.
Correct.
So.
Very much, we are, very much, and we appreciate you seeing that. But we are looking at, hey, as we get these standards in place and we get this leveled, what does that look like? There is a certain time, these students would be pulled out, like I spoke of, seeing that and getting, dreaming a dream of what that program would look like, and then coming and saying, okay, if we had this many people, this is what we could do with it. And those are the conversations we're having right now.
Yeah, I think I want to make, I just want to make sure that we're clear that there's such a difference between gifted and advanced, especially in that elementary, especially in that third, fourth, and fifth grade component. And so my concern is a little bit, as with the DI, I know it's in part of that, the book room, or Bookworm. I remember seeing it in there. Is it truly, is it really pulling the gifted? Is it addressing those needs, or is it just pulling those advanced readers? I just want to make sure that we are truly not losing, because then we have a group of kids that were identified, maybe, you know, that's our heavy year, is third grade identification, or, you know, for third grade. Then you're going to have these kids that just were floated in, third, fourth, fifth, before we're like, oh, yep, they were gifted, and maybe they didn't get that push, and so we're dumping them in. Are we preparing them for that dump into what we have successfully continued in our secondary schools? So I just want to make, and you know.
And I appreciate that. I think that's one thing we're looking at as we start this DI with Bookworms, is where does that get to?
And is it, is it what we're looking for?
Correct. So I appreciate that.
And I think one of the challenges is tonight, we have to give you a. And I think one of the challenges is tonight we have to give you a, a plan. That's a draft that we know that we will revise. So really, that's why we want it, we have a timeline with the state to make sure that this gets turned in as well. So we wanted to give you, here we are right now, then be able to revisit this and then say, typically we start our budget requests. That process, we will start December. Those conversations say this is what we, what we will need for the future. But I really do appreciate that, that commentary, and, and we know that as well.
So Campbell County is a model for several things in the area. We'll challenge you to, let's have our gifted program be the model for the other, other school districts in the area, so.
I think we're all passionate about that and would, would be happy to continue to do that work. All right. So this is an action item, and then I'm happy to answer any other questions that you, you might have, knowing that more than likely we will consider revisions down the road.
Well, thank you, ladies. I was, this started to come off as, we were against you, but I think-
No, I think you want to support us, and we, we will appreciate support, but I want to have better information to tell you exactly that. Because we will, we do, we need it. We hear it. We know that this is an area that we need to continue to work on, because we have less people to do the work. It's important, and we know this. We know that our students need these enriching opportunities and, and see that. And we have been, you know, we have been heavily focused on addressing gaps and helping catch kids up, but we need to continue to enrich and extend, and that's for all of our kids. So stay tuned for those exact numbers and what that, what we really see is doable for us, and we can be really thoughtful about it. And in the meantime, we're hiring a part-time teacher, so we need that, too. Absolutely.
But don't we lead the area in the amount of kids in STEM and, I mean, you got it going on.
We do, it's-
Absolut.
Absolutely. Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
For those other programs, it's pretty much divvied out by school and division.
Yeah, we are the, the main leader of CTE Academy, absolutely. And that includes Health and Medical Sciences, which that's, some of our gifted students are going into that. So we definitely see that. But really, targeting upper elementary and lower middle is, is where we, we need some work. And it's no one's fault, and our teachers are working very hard, but you, they have less people and that impacts them. So, great point. Thank you, Mr. Maddox.
So we need to have a motion and approval to accept this, this 2028 gifted plan, 2028?
Yeah, 2024 through 2028. Future revisions will, will come back to you for approval.
But now, y'all, at budget time, on that list of things we need to consider, y'all are going to have some positions-
We'll have some recommendations for our gifted program.
You going to swallow that?
I'm supportive.
I mean, I've, I've noticed they look at you like when they say something.
Like, what do I say?
He's going to kill us tomorrow.
Don't run a check.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this 2024 through 2028 gifted plan.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Ms. Vaughn, that we approve this gifted plan presentation. Anybody got any more questions? If not, everybody in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
What did you say y'all were going to have, when we were together? What, what was it, Monday? Dream team. That's right. That was the dream team. Dream team. All right. Annual conference. Michelle?
Just to please let Tracy or me know by the end of this week if you plan on attending, so that we can get you registered.
You want to know now?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, still working on it. Yes. I'll let you know by the end of this week. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I'll meet at the bar. Just kidding. You're going to run that morning, right?
All right. Dr. Stanley, talk us good news.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, I, I don't know if Jennifer McCormick, Dr. McCormick, was recognized when she was first hired as Director of People Personnel to replace Nick Pontius, so I want to bring your attention to her. She's in the room tonight. I want to congratulate her on her position and say she's doing a fantastic job. So thank you, Jennifer. I also want to comment on the beginning of the school year. We're going into week four, I believe, and it's been a great start. I want to commend our students and our, and our teachers and our administrators, everybody for doing a good job. Transportation, they survived the first few days. I think the first day, our last bus got home at six o'clock, so I certainly want to thank our parents for being understanding and flexible, and things have worked out in transportation, so arrival times have gotten much better. So thank you for, to everybody for your hard work. I guess really the biggest issue that I have, that I want to present tonight, has to do with the Governor's Executive Order, Executive Order Number 33, which defines a cellphone-free education. And I've provided you with some information regarding that executive order. There's also information that's been put on the Virginia Department of Education that looks at student anxiety, depression, and increased teenage suicide rates over the last 10 years. And, and that's attributed to increased cellphone use and social media. So that's, that's the drive and the push behind having a cellphone-free education. So right now, our policy says that phones should be off and out of sight. They are not allowed to be on during the school day in our, in our elementary schools, in our middle schools. But our high school students do have a privilege of being able to take them out and look at them during lunch. So the executive order and the model policies that we've received thus far define cellphone-free education, define the instructional date as arrival to dismissal. So that conflicts with what our policy has for high school students. So a decision's got to be made in terms of which way we want to go. And, and I would tell you that the vast majority of schools that I've talked to are going along with that definition and creating a cellphone-free education, arrival to dismissal. So I put that out there. We haven't looked at revising any policy, because I'd like to have some direction from you, see which way you're leaning before changing the policy, if that's the way we decide to go. So.
Well, our policy is non-compliant.
With the executive order and the model policies as they've been put out. Right now, the model policies are still in draft form, but I don't see that part of it changing.
So we either are non-compliant or come into compliance.
Correct.
Who would want to be not, not draft? Who would want to be-
So what we would do, the, the final draft is supposed to be put out for us in September. I forget exactly which day. But then what we would do, if we decide to move in that direction, is we would come back to you with a first reading next month, second reading, and then we would have this effective come January 1st, when we're returning from Christmas break.
So overall, historically, we, we have been a cell-free, cellphone-free instructional time. I don't know how well it's enforced. We only have one high school principal here today. And last year, we started letting the, I thought it was just the seniors-
High school.
Okay. Could have it for roughly an hour at lunchtime.
20 minutes.
20 minutes. How well did that work in your school? Did it, was it abused? Do you think the kids valued it, used it wisely? Or do you think they were on TikTok and Facebook and, and- It was a privilege we gave to our kids, and they requested it in a fairly eloquent way. We had that young man speak, and it made sense.
This year, well, just in the past, do I think they have used it wisely, as we as adults would use it? I would say no. Do they appreciate the privilege? Yes. They watch movies, they're on social media. It's a little bit of a release. This year, we have had students have a notebook bag on their way during the school day. So our cell phone, up to this point, referrals have gone up a little bit, but the instances or the offenses have not been where they have been in the past.
So what happens if we aren't in compliance? What happens if we allow, still allow our seniors or high school students to have it for 20 minutes?
According to our, our legal team, this would be a recommendation, a strong recommendation in terms of an executive order, but it's not a regulation that we have to be in compliance with.
So we gave it to them, now we're talking about taking it right back. I'm not opposed to a self, I'm not opposed to the whole concept. I think the concept in general is good, period, but we sort of rewarded our, we could limit it to seniors, you know. We could change our own policy a little bit and just limit it to seniors.
I think seniors would be a lot, because when you've got a full cafeteria of kids, identifying which ones are seniors and which ones are not would be different.
I mean, if we had separate lunches per grade, that would be the only way we'd police that.
You know, Barry said the last meeting, went to BWXT and Delta Star, and he talked about the kids, new hires, can't communicate. That's because they on the cellphones all the time. They don't know how to sit down and talk to somebody.
Right, the socialization, they don't socialize. It is the one free period of the day where they can talk about whatever they want with their peers. The rest of the time is allotted to science and reading and math, like they're focused on that. But lunch is the time that they can stretch, stretch those social interaction muscles and build those skills. Learn how to deal with conflict.
It's fine. Make a decision. Are we, are you asking, you're asking for direction?
I'm asking for some direction. If, if you feel like you would like us to create a policy between now and next month that, that is a reflection of the model policies and the Governor's Executive Order, we can do that and bring that back next month for your approval.
And you're pretty confident that the surrounding school districts are going to adopt the same?
They're, they're either already there, or they are moving in that direction. Yes, sir.
And we were there. We just-
So what happens? I think I asked this question. What happens, like if your watch is an iPhone, you got to peel him off and leave him?
According to the model policies, that, that this would include AirPods, AirBuds, smartwatches, any devices of that nature. I think that Apple Watch would be very hard to enforce, but at the same time, if it's going off and becoming a distraction, I think a teacher or an administrator could, you know, enforce the rules that it's in use.
I'd say go ahead and put the policy forward for first reading.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Are you three, like, in favor or?
I hope you're looking at Dave.
My two sets, I think as a board, we haven't heard a lot of backlash about use of cellphones during lunch. My understanding is this is executive order, this is not a law. And if it's up to me, we would leave our policy as is. I think it's a little iffy, because if I read it correctly, you have to post your policy out on the website or whatever for everybody to see. That's part of the directive. So our policy is going to be out there for everybody to see that we're not following the executive order. But I haven't seen a backlash where, if it was a problem, I would say, yeah, let's ban cellphones. But from what I've heard, it hasn't been a problem. And I don't know if this all or nothing philosophy is always the best way to go. Typically, it's not. Typically, it's somewhere in between is the best way to go. And I think that's kind of where we're at now. And if we see it being abused, or if Dr. Shields says she's having a major issue with it, then I'll be all behind him to get rid of it all together and take that burden off of his plate. But I'm not hearing that right now. And I have talked to some constituents, if you will, and they were not in favor of the overall ban. They appreciated the fact that their students could have a phone in case of an emergency. It was available to them to cut on and use. So I'm not sure, I don't think I'm in favor of changing our policy to mirror the executive order. So that's where I stand with it. I don't know where the rest of the board is.
I'm all for it. Have been since I, you know, came in, concerned with the online bullying, the low self-esteem, suicidal tendencies. Scott was in attendance with me when A.J., A.G. Mieres came and did the parental online. So for those who were not there, the head of online predator enforcement from Bedford County was there. And they created a 15-year-old female fake profile on TikTok. And you guys might not realize what TikTok is. Information is flooded into your kid. They don't go out and pick which pages they want to see. The first thing that appeared on this 15-year-old female's profile was how to date older men. The second one was self-harm. Then it went on to things that I cannot say here at this microphone. The first five thieves were all negative, harmful, invasive, and predatory. So I absolutely support a full ban of phones during the day. And the emergency argument, I always thought when, when I dropped my kids off, who are now 19 and 21, my youngest, at soccer practice, and the other parents were like, you know, asking if I could make, watch their kids with their cellphones. I'm like, why do your kids have cellphones? Well, they were leaving them there, right? But the coach is there. So whenever I've had a parent, and I have had parents from the middle school call and complain since I've been on the board, that they couldn't reach their kid during the day if there was an emergency. And I said, the school has a phone. We have hard-line phones at our school. If there's an emergency, anyone, any parent can show up and get their child. They can call and have them ready to be picked up, and their child can always go. And I know some other folks had some concerns about, you know, our, our kids who are employed or our CTE or things that, the, like if classes canceled at the community college, something like that. Those communications are still done by email, and the kids do have their laptops, so they'd still receive those. And then also, those programs would just need to be aware that if they do need to let my son know that welding class is canceled because, you know, the teacher called out sick, that they call the office and have, get him a message. So I'm all about, we're supposed to keep them safe when they're in our care, and I think that we should have no cellphones on during instructional time.
I'm in agreement. I just think it's unfortunate that we created a po, created a policy maybe for the right reasons, that now we're taking it away.
Right.
But I think we need to be the adults in the room and say, it's the right thing to do.
We'll draft a policy and bring it back to you next month, and then we can have further conversation if needed.
And we can vote against if we-
That's right.
Don't feel inclined.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you? I see a long list over there. Uh, Board of Supervisors meeting minutes, if you want to read them. Board, Mr. Maddox?
Uh, got an email from Ms. Thomas today. She said the students came back ready to learn, and she was thrilled with that. And everything else going to be thank yous. I'd like to thank the many churches and businesses that donated school supplies and snacks for the teachers. Johnson Health Center provided dental care for 30 of our students.
Wow.
And staff received conscience, conscious discipline training, paid for by the grant from LU that we got. Things are going good.
What kind of, what kind of discipline?
Conscious. I can't read my word. That's all I got. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot. Yellow Branch Elementary School had their night at the ballpark on the 30th Friday night, and Ms. Brown actually threw out the game pitch, so I don't think she hit anybody, so that was good. So, and they're having the ice cream, youth cream, Yellow Branch Give Back this week. So if you're in the mood for ice cream, go to Ice Cream Youth Cream, and Yellow Branch will get a portion of the proceeds. And Ms. Brown- And Ms. Brown reported everything was going well, kicking off the year. And Mr. Shields, good start to the year. Football's going well with two wins. And volleyball also got off to a good start with the win, and they've got the Invitational coming up next weekend. And, well, good report from Randy Dutton at Legacy Center. He's been to talk to us a couple of times at least here, and he went over some information with about a hundred and fifty seniors, providing them an opportunity to develop some work-ready skills. So that was good to hear as well, so. And thanks to Ms. Hale and the teachers here tonight, the administration for the presentations on the gifted program, and the capacity information was interesting. So thanks for pulling that together for us.
All right, the Leesville Road Elementary School PTO has Spirit Night at Mr. Goody's Thursday, September nineteenth, so everybody go get some Mr. Goody's. The first Bees home game went well with a sixty-one to thirty-four win. And I think everything went pretty smoothly. The generators were not as loud as I thought they would be. They were, they were, it was good. Bees Girls volleyball teams will face Rustburg tomorrow night in Rustburg in honor of nine eleven. Everyone is encouraged to wear red, white, and blue. Bees volleyball will also host a blackout game on Thursday, the twelfth. Bees golf and cross-country both have meets on Wednesday, the eleventh. I would like to recognize Kevin Peirman, one of our bus drivers, that was awarded the Life Saving Award by the Campbell County Sheriff's Office for saving a life from a burning house. He's a hero every day, but I wanted to thank him for going above and beyond. October second is National School Custodian Day, so thank you to all of our custodians. Couldn't do it without you. And October third is parent-teacher conferences at Leesville Road.
Walker. I thoroughly enjoyed the Wolfert report. Thank you so much. I know most of you know, have been concerned about school impact studies and subdivisions and all that good stuff, and very impressed with the breakdown that they gave us. And thank you so much for doing that. And we definitely share it with John and, you know, the Board of Supervisors, right? So they'll, I guess, get one and a little brief from Clay. And thank Ms. Michelle, even though I haven't looked at the email yet. Anytime someone asks me a financial question, I'll wait. She's so quick and gets right back to me. I haven't even opened the response yet from today, so thank you. And yeah, great first start of school. And I don't have a whole lot, because I just came back from ten days at the beach. So still accepting the comeback. But I appreciate everybody, and I know that Christine, I've reached out regarding construction. You know, some folks had had some, expressed some concerns about parking, imagine that. And, you know, when I referred them back and I sent out the plan, you know, and, and everything that we discussed prior to, and when we approved the actual, chose Blair for the very reasons that they minimized the impact, and even offered or encouraged them to help us find other parking alternatives or ride sharing, if they had any suggestions that we had, had not already exhausted. So I've heard it's going very well, with the exception, of course, ball field, I mean, ballgames. But folks are already used to walking a couple of blocks to Brookway to see a football game, anyway. So very pleased. Every time I drive by there, the construction site is just so clean. The staff is so friendly, and I've never pulled in when I was fully blocked. You know, like normally, there's some type of blockage and road closure. But they've done an amazing job, just hats off to Blair and to everybody else here for choosing them to do the project. So impressed. And that's really all I have today.
Dr. Miller?
Yeah. I've talked to Mr. Harrison down at Brookwood Elementary, and of course, he's new principal, so he's learning also, but is thoroughly enjoying his role and is excited about his school. He does admit that the new curriculum is more rigorous. And, and it's, you know, he's pushing, having to push the kids harder, and, but his teachers are doing well implementing it and getting on board, but there is an obvious recognition that, that the material is more rigorous. Still has his attendance concerns. That's our biggest issue down there. You know, they're on top of it as far as being as proactive as they can, but it's still a concern. They are having an incentive, some type of incentive that's getting ready to start. William Campbell's doing well also. They're doing an attendance campaign. They're, they're a little bit in a better position. They feel good about their attendance, but they're doing a campaign. The, the Generals football team is, as, as Mr. Cartwright said, is a young team. And so we have high hopes, but they're, they're oh and two. So the schools are doing good. I was at the quarterly Laurel meeting. We had sort of a changing of the guard. Dr. Edwards from Lunchburg City Schools is now the superintendent in charge. And Dr. McCormick, I also wonder, welcome you. She's replaced Dr. Pontius at the table at our Laurel Board meetings, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. I did reach out to V S B A about the legislative packet. They said to look for that towards the end of the month, or right at the beginning of October. There will be an email, so I would encourage you all to review it and then, you know, give me some direction before the, before the November meeting. And so also, I want to thank the presentation on the gifted program. It's, it's very important. It's very important that we do it and do it right. So like I say, I want to challenge you, so. Appreciate the presentation and keep up the good work.
All right, without repeating a whole bunch of dates and stuff that I think has already been shared, I want to commend Christine and Roland and Travis at Brookwood High School with having the challenges of the construction, and that has gone really smoothly. And being able to continue with seniors' traditions as best as they can. And really getting creative and thinking out of the box and supporting the kids when they come up with these great ideas, to say, can we do it this way? And, and really making that happen. I attended the first volleyball game, because I was worried about the construction and kind of what things were going and what that was gonna look like in the gym with trailers, you know, porta potty trailers, in essence, as bathrooms and not having that construction down. It went really well, and parents were very positive about, again, the accommodation to try to not, you know, suddenly have to take everything as away games. Same with the football game on Friday night. Parking wasn't terrible. I mean, I think we expected a bigger crowd, just with some changes in coaching staff, and things were different, and it was great. And I want to commend you, because everything that happened on Friday, you were there. And when I was leaving the football game and I got stopped by some parents that said, you know, my kids really appreciated the fact that the superintendent was there and hanging out with them on Friday with everything that was going on at the school. And then it was just, it, it went well. And thank you for being present and being there. It was definitely noticed.
Well, we, we had a joint meeting, what, three or four weeks ago? At Brookwood High School, and we got to tour the construction. So I'm happy I'm not on that administrative team, because, I mean, it's, it's a construction site, period. That's all, I mean, that's what it is. It's not a school, it's a construction site, you know, over there. It's, my hat's off to them. It's, it's, it's amazing. I had a Central Virginia Governor's School meeting last Wednesday. Everything's rolling well there. Talked to Mr. Bennett at length about Concord, and he said Concord kids are wonderful. Just thinks, he says they're great. The dream team, y'all did a great job on the gifted program, and I, I, I just appreciate all you all do. And, I mean, from, from what you're saying, you're understaffed and overworked, so we'll do a weekend to help you. The donations again tonight, there were not that many, but they were really substantial, so appreciate all them.
It just hit me. What about the sinkholes at Rustburg Middle School? Did we figure out what caused them to?
I don't think Blair has a definitive answer for what's causing them, but they do have the, I guess, equipment over there. I saw it today to start digging it up. Unfortunately, between two drain inlets, there's, there's been some sinkholes. So the pipe, they've, they've cambered it, and they don't see any cracks or anything with that structure. So they're not exactly sure what's causing it, so they're gonna have to dig it up.
Okay, okay.
Where is it?
This is the new track at Rustburg Middle.
What about the one in the parking lot? They took that or?
The one, excuse me.
Wasn't there a hole in the driveway?
No, this was on the track.
This is all on the track.
This was on the track, yeah. We got one, one hole on the track, and then another hole beside the inlet, and we think that it's all connected. So the nice new track is about to keep torn out.
Yep. All right, anybody got anything else? Appreciate all that. There is a need for a closed meeting. Somebody gonna?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we convene in a closed meeting for discussion of personnel matters relating to assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of a specific employee, being employee number one, in accordance with Section 2.2-3711 parentheses A, parentheses one of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty as amended.
Second?
Motion second. Everybody in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Take about, what, two or three minutes? Take about, what, two or three minutes? Go back into open session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're in open session. We don't need to open the door, nobody's outside. Now, I ask for a motion certifying that to the best of each member's knowledge that during our closed meeting, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maddox, second, and by Ms. Vaughn. All those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Opposed? Same? Okay. Now we entertain a motion. Aye?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we um, follow the administration's recommendate, recommendation regarding employee number one.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Miller, second, and by Ms. Parker, that we support the administration's recommendation. Anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is that all we need to do? You're happy? I mean, you're, we don't need, okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Parker, second, and by who?
Second.
David Phillips? All those in favor indicate by standing up. We'll go home.